Welcome everyone to the Agden City Council Meeting on May 19, 2020. Please let the record reflect that all council members are present. Let's double check in, I believe that's true. So tonight, we have the privilege of hearing from Janine Aller Smith, Executive Director of the Council about the tentative budget for fiscal year 2021.
Thank you Chair Tiberka. I will do my best to share my screen in an appropriate way. How's that look?
Perfect.
Okay. So, thank you for letting me have this opportunity to present to you the tentative budget. Your action tonight will be to set a public hearing on the tentative budget for June 2. By state law, you're required to adopt tentative budget. I think the reason for that is in case there are some reasons why you don't get a final budget by the June 30 deadline, for example, if you're going through a truth in taxation process, then you still have an operating budget in place. So just a quick review of some of your financial principles that you adopted earlier in April. Just make sure that part of your financial principles have conservative revenue estimates, a balanced budget, which you're required by law to do. Employee salaries as a budget priority was one of your principles. Maintaining the strategic planning and have reserves of at least 10% of general revenues. That was a goal that you set a couple of years ago because we were hovering around the 5% for many years because that was what the state required us to have. In checking with Lisa, for the last couple of years, we've exceeded that 10% goal. So the city is in relatively good position and certainly a lot better than some of our sister cities going into this difficult period. I did just want to mention, in the last year's goals for, so this current year, not the current year goals, but yes, the current year goals. You had discussed having an annual review of the property tax revenues and a discussion about whether you wanted to go through that truth in taxation process. And I just wanted to remind you of that. When we went through the budget goals for this upcoming year, those goals that you adopted were taken directly from the strategic plan and reflected the strategic initiatives that are in that strategic plan. And so we didn't include this annual review of property tax revenues in that. And so it's just a thought in your head that if it's something we want to add, you certainly can. Of course, you can always have that discussion. As the mayor presented his budget, and now you've had an opportunity to hear from a couple of the directors, it's clear that this tentative budget that's been presented has two priorities. Really, it's just financial sustainability. Right now, there are just so many unknowns. And the projections, the numbers that we need to make projections lag, sales tax lags. And so it's going to be many months before the city knows what the full impact of the COVID-19 will be. So I think this budget reflects those concerns and so it's very fiscally conservative. And I think it also anticipates that the effects of COVID will go in even to the 2122 budget year. This budget does maintain those essential services that are so important to the residents. So I mentioned property taxes. There's no property tax increase proposed in the budget, in the mayor's budget. I just wanted to make that clear. But as we've discussed over the few years that we've had these property tax increases, I thought I would just do for you, show you the time value of the revenues that we get, which we've done in these truth and taxation discussions. So I pulled the fiscal year 2001 budget, so 20 years ago, the budget, and pulled that to a current value and then compared it. And I think this is important for residents especially to understand. So we have slightly more, so 2.5% more money in tax revenues than we had 20 years ago. And I think you need to let that sink in and hopefully let the residents that are listening, let that sink in. You have the same tax revenue, 2.5% more tax revenue than you had 20 years ago. And I think it speaks to the great management that we have in the city. Obviously, we do have some additional revenues on top of tax revenues. But you know, the proposed tax revenues are $40 million. The total, the general fund revenues, which these tax revenues go into, is 60. So not a lot of extra money when you figure that 71% of that $60 million budget is personnel costs. With regard to staffing, there are some additional positions added, which all are grant funded. There's a victim services coordinator that will be housed in the prosecutor's office, four sworn police officers, and one audit inspections administrator in the police department. And they're all grant funded. In addition to those changes, there was one position that was renamed, that's in the airport. It was a maintenance tech that was changed to an administrative assistant. I checked with the airport manager because those are very different skill sets. It was just a position that was open and they felt like it could be better used in the office as opposed to as a technician, so they made that change. There were two reclassifications. One of those was actually in the city council office. We reclassified a policy analyst position that we had approved into a communication specialist. And then the city treasurer was reclassed to a deputy director for management services. So here are the year-over-year budget comparisons, comparing the FY '20 adopted budget to the FY '21 proposed budget. And just to clarify, just showing in red doesn't mean deficit. It just means that it's less than what was in the previous year. So you can see that overall, out of the $181 million budget is about 2.3% lower than last year's budget, the current year's budget. For the general fund, it's about 6.2% lower than last year's or this current year's budget. And this does include some changes that were, those figures, the $181 million does include changes that were made to the Schedule A1, excuse me, Schedule A, which we'll discuss in just a minute. So the council's budget goals, taken directly from the strategic plan, covers economic development, community safety, recreation, city image and reputation, and fiscal sustainability and transparency. Because this is such a lean budget, there aren't a lot of new monies going into any of these things. But there are some continued funding that meet some of the goals. And the goals that you recently adopted, your budget priority was the Quality Neighborhoods Program. That is funded at $1 million in the budget. That is the fifth year of a five-year commitment that the council's made. And I've been told that it's likely that Community and Economic Development Department will make that request again in the next budget to continue that $1 million into that Quality Neighborhoods project. There's also $50,000. So I've kind of checked some of those additional budget goals that I think are addressed in the budget. And I thought the Business Information Center was important to note. They're getting $50,000, which doesn't seem like a lot of money. But through the Business Loan Program of Utah, that Business Information Center is able to leverage $350,000 of additional loan money. So it's really a good investment for that $50,000. Budget priority under community safety was for fire and police salaries. And unfortunately, as you've heard from the directors and from the mayor, there's no step or COLA increases proposed in this budget. But there are five new positions in OPD which are grant funded. There are some additional funds in street and sidewalk, which are funded every year, which kind of covers pedestrian vehicle safety. They're working hard on the emergency preparedness, as you've heard from the fire department earlier in the work session. Station 4, they're working on, oh, that is current year dollars, not future year dollars. And for the most part, again, they're just maintaining those essential services that are so important for community safety. With recreation, you may recall that you funded some additional money in the current year. And there are some funds going into the recreational amenities at Serge Simmons and Bonneville Park. And there's money for the arts grants and arts projects is also being funded. Cultural events, as you know, downtown events, event participation, those are sort of all on hold due to the virus situation. City image and reputation, your budget priority was diversity and public engagement. So we have funded the neighbor up grants, although they're sort of on hold right now until we can be sure that some of those activities can occur in a safe manner and in alignment with the directions from the Health Department. And then, of course, some of those additional budget goals, the capital improvements, there's about $5.7 million in capital improvements that are in this budget. You also may recall in this current year that we have set aside $30,000 towards some translation services and we've asked the Diversity Commission to give us some recommendations about how they would like, how they would recommend that money be utilized, given that it's essentially one-time funds. The fiscal sustainability, again, budget priority with city employees and essential services. There's not any reduction in services for now, although they may be providing those services in a slightly different way. And just as a reminder, those essential services are essentially police and fire, water, sewer, garbage, those kinds of things that really only the city can take care of. I did notice, and I just wanted to throw a shout out to the administration. I was on the city's website this afternoon. They've done a really great job of putting together great information on the virus and how it's impacting that. And it's got tons of information for the community. They provide an update there and it's really helpful for, I think, the community in making sure that those essential services are there. So there are some minor changes which are proposed in the Schedule A, totaling $155,850. There's no changes in the general fund. But there is a decrease in the use of fund balance in the IT fund. This was sort of an error that was made that should have, that didn't make it in the original budget. They removed the expenses for the tiering, which is computer purchases in the IT fund, but they didn't remove the the revenue or that use of fund balance. So this is just a correction there. And then in the major grants, it also acknowledges those shifts to align with the annual action plan that you took care of last week, where it shifts funds to the microrenovenced loan program and increases quality neighborhoods. So this is the Schedule A. There is a Schedule A1 that will come with the full budget, the regular budget, the final budget. And you can, will have the opportunity to make any additional changes that you'd like to see in the budget in that Schedule A1. So this is the budget process that we've laid out. The mayor presented his budget on May 5. We are now in these weeks through June 2, where you're hearing from the department directors and reviewing the budget and asking your questions and getting up to speed so that you can make some informed decisions. The proposal is to adopt the tentative budget on June 2. The MBA and RDA budgets will come a week later. And then we'll have some, on that June 2 night, we will also set a public hearing on the final budget. And then on the 16th, there'll be an opportunity for some public input. Not sure exactly what format that will be in, whether it's Facebook Live or if we have a Zoom Town Hall. And then on your schedule to adopt the final budget on June 23. So that's my presentation and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Janine. Any questions from council members?
I just have some, maybe some, and I apologize for not reaching out to all you all before this. But you know, I've been the proponent, or the proponent of looking at truth in taxation every other year, and I think it's this year that every other year comes up. And Janine, thanks, you made a very valid point about our property taxes. And I maybe, I would like to say that I probably would say that we not go through a truth in taxation. But I have a question for you and trying to figure out. So, and it's a struggle that I'm having in this. And maybe, Janine, you can help lead me down a direction here. But a struggle I have is that we're going to have more information coming to us a month from now about sales tax or two months from now about, you know, the economic impact of COVID. And I'm wondering if there's a way to take a look at this information at a date, certain time, and to say, are we at our, or where are we at with our revenues? Where are we at with our expenditures? And is there a way to look at the budget? And if we are in line, that's great. And if not, start to ask administration to do an amended budget of some sort? I'm just, part of me feels like we don't have all the information. And I don't think we will have all the information. It just seems like maybe two months from now or three months from now, we'll have a lot more information and to see if we're in line. Is there a way to look at the budget and react at that point instead of, I mean, maybe adopting it and then looking at it again and readjusting it maybe in two or three, three or four months? I don't know what the answer is, but I'm just trying to, yeah, my first, yeah, go ahead.
I was gonna say, I think it's a great thought because you're right. You don't, you're not going to have all the information. And I think the administration's, Lisa and her team have done the best they can in projecting based on the information that they have. And trust me, the league has done tons of work in terms of trying to find what's happening and what would be a best number to, numbers to work from. But as you know, you do get quarterly financial reports from the administration. But those are generally expense reports. And maybe what we could do is just set a date, let's say mid-October, which by then we would have that initial first quarter financial report. And then also take a look at the revenues at that point to see where we're falling. And we can work with the administration to kind of outline a work session where we focus just on the current year budget and do a deep dive where we are and to see if you need to make any adjustments. And you know, you heard from the chief about how hard it is to keep officers now. And now we're going into this. And I know that there are other cities that are providing raises this year. So we're going to get that much farther behind. I'm not saying that we'll be able to do it, but it's certainly something you might want to just look at.
And I just want to say, by no means am I saying that administration and Lisa and those financial people are doing, I mean, they are doing the best job that they can do. I just am, I am, not that I'm concerned about revenues and expenses and not being able to react. I'm just, I'm more concerned about where we're at and maybe the ability to react. And if we do need to do some different changing, I would, I would think that if we do, and I'll just throw out a hypothetical, if we have to do some changing, it may be because of a policy change of getting rid of something, a service or something. And I think that we would be prudent to look at that maybe in three or four months. So that, I don't know if anybody else has any comments to that.
I have a suggestion that goes along with that a little bit. If we went to a truth in taxation, kept that on the table, that would buy us more time. That doesn't mean that we would pass a truth in taxation, but maybe our numbers would be a little more clear if we go a little past June 30. I don't, you know, I think we ought to just keep that on the table as one of the items in our toolbox to consider during this fiscal year.
Yeah, I guess the only issue was like, if you want to go through a truth in taxation, then you have to pick, you're going to have to pick some numbers. And that means you're going to have to advertise some numbers. I don't think you want to go through the process for fun, if that makes sense. And so I, I mean, you have control of the budget. It's your purview. It's the primary policy document that you control. And so I think you can make the decisions that you need to now with the understanding that you can always make some changes later. And I'm sure that the administration would be happy to make some recommendations as they, because they're working with it on a daily basis and seeing the impacts on a daily basis. And we could work with the administration to put together a work session that would provide you the information that you need. But it is an option. I'm just saying it's a hard option. And I'm not sure how it would, how the communications would go on that. It would be, I think it would be a hard, I guess, message to put out to the community.
Yeah, because people would just think we were raising taxes.
Raising taxes, yeah. I just think that it may be more of a more regular check-in is important as we go through this, not knowing what, how far sales tax may go down or how far. And I am very confident that administration will react. But I do think that we would be, it would be beneficial for us to know how they are reacting. And I think that that's important for us to follow, even though we would adopt a budget in June, so.
Later in the year, we'll have, we could have another open, you know, a budget opening that would have truer numbers that we would have? Is that, is that what we're saying here?
That's a possibility, depending on if there's been any significant changes over what the administration has estimated.
Either a negative or a positive.
Correct.
Any other comments or questions?
Okay, well, thank you.
I agree with the approach to just look at it as it's necessary. I kind of thought a lot about what Marcia was saying too, just kind of wonder what, how we might react with new data as it filters in. And I think we just need to kind of do it as it comes. That's kind of our job.
Yeah, and we're happy to do that. So I think we'll schedule a hard thing, maybe sort of mid-October. But if we, it looks like we need to do it sooner, we can certainly schedule another work session sooner than that. If there's no other questions, then the recommendation from staff is that you just go ahead and set the public hearing on the FY 2021 tentative budget for June 2.
I'd be happy to entertain any motions.
Well, Chair, I'll go ahead and make that motion that we set the public hearing for June 2 on the tentative budget for fiscal years 2020 to 2021.
Second.
So we have a motion by council member Hayer and a second by council member White to set the public hearing for June 2, 2020. And this is a voice vote, on favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Great, thank you all. I just want to mention too to the public, we saw the schedule there, but we would be happy to take any public comment about the budget throughout the process through the online form that you can go to. So that would be part of the public record or you could call the phone number that's available. Also, feel free to reach out to any council member with our contact information that's available on our website as well. And for this evening, we did not have any written public comments received within the past week. So with that, I would love to invite Mayor Caldwell if he'd like to make any comments.
No, I'd just add that we appreciate everybody's flexibility with this. When we presented it two weeks ago, it was going to be with the priority of, we don't know, we don't know. We're going to need to be flexible as we move through this. That will keep us as a city more competitive and give us the ability to respond to what's going on. And I really appreciate, you know, Janine, your presentation and everything you've talked about. And like we said, we presented the most conservative budget possible. And that gives us the most room to move forward as we get more data. And so everybody on this Brady Bunch screen is in an impossible decision, being asked to make really difficult positions, as are our state legislators and everyone else. And so just going into this in the Utah way with the willingness to be a team and figure this out together, I think will really help get us through it. So thank you and I appreciate all the work that you're all doing and some of the state leaders are doing as well, because this is unprecedented. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Would any council members like to make comments?
I agree, this is going to be a tough, tough lift. I think we're, we've got some interesting times in front of us. And I appreciate the ability to have an open dialogue with our administration. That doesn't always happen. And so I appreciate that they're being as open as they can and we are being as reactive and as we can. So I think we're doing a great job and I appreciate everybody's heavy lift on this one. one.
Do you have any other comments? I'd like to just give a couple extra seconds, just in case people can't find their mute. Okay, well, yeah, I disagree. I thank everybody for all their work, and thanks again for your presentation, Janine, and helping us comprehend the whole thing. And I think that we are ready to adjourn and go back into our work session.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn by council member Hayer, second by council member Nadolski, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you all.